Sharon, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Yes.
And just as a reminder for voting items, your video will have to be on.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Good afternoon and welcome to the first HCC Board of Trustees regular meeting for this year. I would like to take this time to introduce our newly elected trustees, Lalu Davies, representing District Four, and Sean Sheben, representing District Five. I am also elated to welcome back our re-elected trustee, Dr. Prietta Vandebel-Stahlworth, representing District Four. This regular meeting will now come to order on January 24, 2024 at?
4:03 PM.
This meeting was called for the purpose that's listed on the duly posted meeting notice. At this time, please join me for a prayer followed by the pledge. Almighty Father, we come before you this afternoon thanking you in advance for the goodness you are going to do for this institution. Thank you for the guidance that you are going to give each and every one of us who are involved in moving this institution in the direction that it needs to go. Heavenly Father, I want you to unite us as one and make us understand and realize that it is not about us as individuals, but about us as a team. We are a team. We are the team for Houston Community College, which is the college for Houston. And Lord, I know that you're going to guide us. You're going to fix what's broken at this institution. You're going to mend relationships at this institution. And you're going to do everything that we need to advance our students' success. In Jesus' name, I pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivi- liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one straight under God, one and indivi- We are now ready to approve the minutes from the Academic and Student Affairs Committee, the Audit Committee, Board Governance Committee, Committee of the Whole, regular and special meeting on December 6, 2023, and special meeting on December 29, 2023. Is there a motion to approve the minutes or December 2023?
I'm moved.
Is there a second? It has been moved in second. Are there any corrections to the minutes?
Madam Chair, no. Just a point of order. I just wanted to inform that on the meeting of the 29th that was called by three trustees, many of us were on holiday, including some of the staff members on the chancellor's council. So it's unfortunate that this type of strategy to do business of the college happened at that. And then it only took 22 minutes and closed session to approve it. So I just want to let folks know that, you know, it wasn't my intent not to be here, but I didn't have notice of it. And so I know there were several that were not present here on the dais and also out there. So just to let you know. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I just wanted to agree with trustee Laredo. I had a medical procedure that was specifically scheduled at that time because the college would be closed and a medical treatment that could not be changed. And it's unfortunate that that was the only conversation that we've ever had with regard to the selection of a permanent chancellor. And so many of us were disenfranchised in the process. So I just wanted to agree with trustee Laredo.
Madam Chair.
Any other comments?
Madam Chair.
Trustee Tamas, yes?
A very important meeting was called. Three trustees calling a meeting in the holiday. And again, we disenfranchised our staff. Board members were disenfranchised. The community was disenfranchised to hold a meeting on the 29th during the holidays for such an important decision. And I want that on the record as well.
Thank you so much. Well, I would also like to put on the record, during that time, I lost my mother. But I attended the meeting because it was my responsibility. If three trustees call a meeting as chair of the board, it is my responsibility to be present. I cannot deny the meeting. Therefore, the meeting had to be called. And it was nothing personal on my part to anyone. We are now ready to vote on the approval of the minutes for December 2023.
Sharon, that's abstained for me.
Dr. Tamas, we even need your camera to be on in order to cast the vote.
One sec.
And could you repeat your vote again, please?
Abstained.
Okay, received. Thank you. The motion passed with a vote of seven in favor, no opposites, and two abstained. Seven zero two.
We will now move to our awards presentations and recognitions. Todd DePlantis will introduce the awards, presentations, and recognitions.
...who support workforce programs from HCC students. At this time, we invite representatives from Texas Mutual and the HCC Foundation President Karen Schmidt to join the trustees and chancellor in front of the dais for the check presentation. Through its grant program, Texas Mutual aims at to promote workforce development and safety training across Texas with the goal to fortify businesses to strengthen the Texas economy. Thank you for your generous contribution to HCC's foundation in support of our students. We'll provide an opportunity for remarks by our donors at the end of the recognition. Chancellor and trustees, if you wouldn't mind remaining in front of the dais for two more presentations. We're pleased to announce that for the first time in the history of Achieving the Dream, Houston Community College has its first Dream Scholar. We asked that Michaela Hall would join the trustees and chancellor in front of the dais for the recognition. Michaela is an honor student, college student, at Southwest College and will graduate in May 2024 with an AA in computer science and plans to transfer to the University of Texas in Austin in August 2024. Achieving the Dreams Scholar Program is an experiential learning opportunity designed to enhance leadership, critical thinking, and networking skills. It is available to up to eight students with the participating Achieving the Dream networks institutions. As Dream Scholars, students will engage with the community activists, educational leaders, peers, and Dream Scholar alumni. Chosen through a competitive application process, scholars participate in a learning experience that culminates in attending and sharing their experiences at Dream 2024, February of this year, in Orlando, Florida. Congratulations to Michaela for her hard work in receiving this prestigious award. We have one more recognition. Two teams of ambitious students from Houston Community College defied the odds and soared to the top ranks of the prestigious NASA MITTIC Challenge, a national competition that pushes students to develop innovative solutions using real NASA technologies. Both teams, Team Sound Solution and Team Nivalis, faced intense competition from universities like University of Houston Clear Lake, first place, University of California Davis, and University of Massachusetts Boston. Their victory underscores the caliber of talent nurtured here at HCC and their ability to compete with and surpass students from top universities across the nation. We ask that the following members of the Team Sound Solution would join the trustees and chancellor in front of the dais for their recognition. Members are Precious Shedrak, pre-med; Teresa Magalog, biology; Hudson Desi, business; Chukwu Adocha, computer science; Zeus Acosta, computer science; and Jeffrey Doliv, physics; Faculty Principal Investigator; Dr. Nashin Pasha, Southwest Honors College Director and Psychology Professor. Team Sound Solution secured a remarkable second-place finish, bringing home a well-deserved $10,000 prize and national recognition for their ingenuity. Their project, a personalized hearing aid powered by NASA's statistical audibility prediction algorithm, promises to revolutionize the hearing aid industry by offering affordable, customizable sound enhancements for millions with hearing loss. Congratulations to Team Sound Solutions on a wonderful accomplishment. We now ask that members of Team Nivalis would come forward for their recognition. Members include Emily Usner, business; Dylan Thack, mechanical engineering; Sarah Biaggi, AS general; Marco O'Malley, finance; Hassan Khan, pre-med; Awujju Idjaki, computer science; Faculty Principal Investigator, Dr. Sujit Mundal, chemistry professor here at HCC. Come on forward. Team Nivalis impressed the judges with their sustainable cooler that utilizes NASA's layered composite insulation for extreme conditions technology. The innovative cooler eliminates the need for ice or electricity, making it perfect for outdoor enthusiasts and addressing the critical need for efficient organ transportation in the medical field. Congratulations, and we salute the remarkable achievements of our HCC students. Chancellor and trustees, you may now return to the dais. At this time, we invite Ms. Karen Schmidt and representatives of Texas Mutual to the podium for remarks on the check presentation.
Thank you, Board Chair Letton Gary, trustees, and Chancellor Ford Fisher. I'm honored to have the opportunity, as the HCC Foundation President, to thank Texas Mutual for its support for HCC student success. Texas Mutual has recently awarded Houston Community College Foundation a grant of $90,000 to support workforce programs for HCC students. Through its grant program... Through its grant program, Texas Mutual aims to promote workforce development and safety training programs across Texas with the goal to fortify businesses to strengthen the Texas economy. We are so grateful for their support of HCC and their commitment to our community because, as you know, HCC is Houston's community college. Now, I would like to invite Dr. Michael Webster to the podium to share more about the program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you, Karen. I am pleased to be able to thank Texas Mutual for its partnership and in support of HCC. We're grateful for this $90,000 grant, which will provide full financial assistance to students in welding, construction, and electrical technology to complete their certificate program at HCC's training location within Gallery Furniture on the North Freeway. Data shows that communities in the zip codes near Gallery have high levels of unemployment and poverty while at the same time a low level of education beyond high school. Thus, the need is great for effective training that leads to well-paying jobs for this community. At HCC, we help students enter the doors of higher education, which is the first step on their road to economic mobility. We do this by closing the funding gap between federal and state grants and the family's ability to pay. Often, our workforce students and our continuing ed students in particular are not necessarily eligible for a full array of financial aid. This makes private philanthropic support even more critical for these set of students. Each student's scenario is unique, challenging, and hopeful in its own way. Whatever the circumstances, we recognize the value that a prosecondary credential can have on the social, economic mobility of students and their families. So thank you once again, Texas Mutual, for enabling us to make this impact. And I'd like to invite Jackie Saguchi, Community Affairs Manager from Texas Mutual up here. And just a point of privilege, not only does the Texas Mutual Foundation support us in this way, they're also on their second cohort of offering up an apprenticeship in partnership with us, pioneers, if you will, in that field.
Hello, and thank you so much for having us here today and for this recognition. We are incredibly proud to be partners with Houston Community College. And for those of you who might not know who Texas Mutual Insurance Company is, we are the largest workers' compensation insurance company in the state of Texas. We insure over 75,000 businesses and over 1.5 million employees who go to work and go back home to their families safe at the end of every single day. And because we only do business in Texas, the economic success of businesses, communities, and families is directly related to our own success at Texas Mutual. For this reason, we couldn't be more proud to partner with Houston Community College and several community colleges across the state and Work Texas for everything that you all are doing right here in your region. As Dr. Webster mentioned, last year, our Houston office partnered with the team here at Houston Community College to stand up our very first apprenticeship program for a claims adjuster program. First, you know, one of the first in the insurance industry. And we're really proud to say that two of our apprentices will graduate with their associate's degree this year. Two more will start later this year for a total of six new graduates and employees at Texas Mutual. We're very proud about that. Thank you once again for this recognition, for your time. We're thrilled to celebrate the work that we're doing together, the work that you all do in our communities, and we look forward to doing more of it. Thank you.
Madam Chair, this concludes the award presentations and recognitions.
We will now open the floor for trustees to provide information regarding activities in their respective districts and overview from conferences or workshops attended and/or to recognize individuals for outstanding contributions in the community that promote education and community service. We ask trustees to limit their respective comments to no more than four minutes. Trustees? Anyone?
Madam Chair. I have had the honor to speak with so many people here. And I just want to tell the faculty and staff in particular, I know it's been an incredibly challenging year for a lot of us. And I just want to let you know that you are seen. The work you are doing for our students is seen and appreciated, no matter what. And, you know, I just really am moved to say that, you know, after talking to so many, that truly, from the bottom of my heart, thank you for waking up every day, for coming in and serving our students. So I just want to take a moment to thank you.
Right card. Anyone else? Trustee Vandebel-Stalworth?
I want to acknowledge someone in particular, Dr. Ravi Bombretta. You're here. Waving in the corner. I want to thank Dr. Ravi because he has been very, very diligent in making sure that Houston Community College students are on the cutting edge of NASA innovations. His event that he held, they did the movie Hidden Figures. But he also had three major NASA powerhouses here to speak. And there were 300 students, over 300 students that were here. And I want to thank you because the District Nine students were really energized by seeing this. And one of the persons in particular designs the spacesuits. And so I thought that was amazing that our consumer arts now can participate in space design, space clothing design. We should have a fashion show for that. But, Dr. Ravi, I want to thank you because you have been consistent for the six years that I have been here. You have been consistent in opening the doors to community, having community learning programs that did not cost, engaging our seniors in learning how to use their IT implements. But this, this you have taken to another level. So I just wanted to acknowledge you and say thank you, thank you, thank you. This NASA mythic thing, this is him, in case you all didn't know who was doing that. It's this gentleman and that gentleman. Where's the other gentleman? The students. These, I mean, Ravi marshals these kids, these young people. Yeah, you got something to stand up. And I realize I'm such a science geek, you know, this is perfect for me. But the fact that they made it to the shark, they made it to the shark tank, right? They made it to the NASA shark tank. That is huge for a community college. That's a four-year institution challenge, and they made it. So thank you, thank you, thank you for your leadership, young people. Thank you for making us look so good. It's amazing.
Trustee Laredo?
I also want to piggyback on the two trustees that refer to students. We've had so many successes that we've heard about. And it wouldn't happen without the leaders and without the faculties, the staff, people that have that vision and want to include the students and do for the students and students. It's all about you guys. So it's thank you for taking us out there and taking us to the next level. And I always say, you know, with our telescope projects that we have in the east side, we're going to go up to NASA soon and go to space. And we're going to be the first ones from HCC up there in space. So thank you. Let's keep that dream going. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay.
Just add a comment. It's not exactly District Four, partly District Four. There's a Kenzie Art Collection that's at the Holocaust Museum that's on display. It was opened, I believe, my week's emerging together, trusted Wilson, so I can't keep up with what dates. But it was opened, I believe, the week before last. And that's going to be, it's a historical collection of African-American artifacts that was started by the Kenzie family. And so I think it's an incredible exhibit that people ought to go take a look at when you get a chance. And on February 10th, the original Martin Luther King Black Heritage Parade that was supposed to take place during Winter Geden or whatever we call it now in Houston. supposed to take place during Winter Geden, or whatever we call it now in Houston, has been rescheduled for February 10th, which is a Saturday. So, certainly urge, you know, those in the community to participate in that as well. And Black History Month would have been in full session by then.
Madam Chair, I'd like to talk, I'd like to add, for the Kinsey collection, a retired HCC administrator is one of the artists for that, Eva Cozy. Her art will be on exhibit as part of the Kinsey collection.
Anyone else? Okay. The following meetings are scheduled for February 2024. February 14th, committee meetings scheduled to begin at 1:30 PM. February 14th, committee of the whole meeting will begin at 4:00 PM. February 21st, regular meeting will begin at 4:00 PM. The meetings will be held at the HCC Administrative Building, 3100 Main Street, second floor auditorium, and will be posted according to the open meetings at requirements. It is always a blessing to be able to celebrate another year. We want to express happy birthday wishes to our one and only trustee, Eva Laredo, who celebrated her birthday on January 17th.
Thank you.
We hope you had a wonderful birthday celebration and wish you many, many more birthday celebrations.
Thank you. Still celebrating. The month is not over.
This concludes the chairman's report. We will now hear from Dr. Ford Fisher with the chancellor's report.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm delighted to report that enrollment is up this semester by 6% on the daily comparative report, yes. We will have additional flex entry starts, and we'll be reporting information to you on a monthly basis. We're also expanding the weekend college to provide credentials of value for working adults. In November, the executive team met in a retreat to discuss the strategic plan and to assign measurable outcomes. Smart goals that are specific, measurable, actionable, achievable, realistic, and time-bound were set. The draft vision of our team's work will be brought to the board in February for discussion, and updates will be provided per the direction of the board. I would like to take a moment at this time to introduce the leadership team to our board. Two of our members of the leadership team are not here this afternoon. They had a prior engagement that was really very pressing for them. So, this is particularly important for our board members, but our new trustees as well to the board, trustee Sean Sheben and trustee LeLu Davis-Yumitton. So, members of the leadership team, I ask that you stand when your name is called. First, Ms. Sharon Wright, and of course, you know her board services. Doctor, Doctor Norma Perez is the interim Senior Vice Chancellor of Instruction and Student Mr. Marshall Hines is the Senior Vice Chancellor of Finance and Administration and Chief Finance Officer and Business Officer. Doctor Francis Villagrand Glover is President of the Southeast College and Interim Vice Chancellor of Student Services. Doctor Andrea Burridge is Interim Vice Chancellor of Strategy Planning and Institutional Effectiveness. Doctor Zachary Hodges is President of the Northwest College. Doctor Michael Edwards is President of the Northeast College. Doctor Philip Nikotary is the President of Coleman College. He's not here this afternoon, because he's working with our ADN students. And Doctor Mudus Sadiqi is not here as well this afternoon. We have Doctor Remel Young, who is the Interim Chief of Staff and Vice Chancellor for Public Information, Communication, and External Affairs. Ms. Pharoah Prestige, Chief Information Officer. Mr. Terrance Corrigan is the Executive Director of Internal Audit. Doctor Madalena Brolle Hopkins is President of the Southwest College and Interim Vice Chancellor of Workforce Instruction. She is not here this afternoon. And Doctor Jerome Drain is Interim President of the Online College. Doctor Izzy Anderson is the Vice Chancellor of Talent Engagement and Chief Human Resources Officer. Ms. Samantha Bangeras is Chief Facilities Officer. Ms. Karen Schmidt is President of the HCC Foundation and Executive Director of the Foundation. Doctor Zayzon Grigsby is Faculty Senate President. Mr. Igor Lucci is United Student Government President. And Mr. Aaron Henry is President of the Staff Senate. Thank you all very, very much. Now, at this time, I would like to also invite Doctor Andrea Burridge, Interim Vice Chancellor of Strategy Planning and Institutional Effectiveness, to the podium to provide a brief enrollment update. And if you choose to sit where you are to give the report, that's understandable, and we appreciate that very much. Doctor Burridge.
Thank you. Thank you. So, Madam Chair, trustees, Madam Chancellor, thank you for allowing me to present this section of the chancellor's report. I will update you on HCC's spring 2024 enrollment and the outlook for the future. HCC updates enrollment projections regularly. In 2022-23, HCC partnered with Huron Consulting to produce projections completed April 2023. At that point, the model predicted no increase in enrollment for this year, fiscal year 2024, and a 1% enrollment increase for next year, fiscal year 2025. However, HCC has exceeded these projections thus far this year, with a 3% increase in fall and a 6% increase currently for spring, so has updated these models. In these models, HCC examines traditional enrollment, which is non-dual credit SCH enrollment, our dual credit enrollment, and continuing education enrollment. These are the careers that hold credentials of value. HCC also considers secondary segments, such as the student age group and their residency status. Considering HCC's fall enrollment by academic year, it's evident that its strongest growth was in dual credit. Notably, in fall 2023, HCC saw a small increase in non-dual enrollment. This is notable, because it reverses a trend of declining enrollment in this segment that had taken place in every fall semester since fall of 2017. This spring, we see strong enrollment in all careers and significantly in our traditional non-dual credit enrollment, with the first increase in DISC groups since spring of 2016. Before that point, our, our increase in our traditional non-dual credit students had been decreasing every spring, so this is quite a turnaround. Examining our secondary segments, HCC has seen growth or stability in enrollments in students under 25, but notably, enrollments of students 25 and older has steadily declined, which has the impact, which has the potential to impact our state funding. We also look at enrollment by in-district and out-of-district status. Dual credit shows consistent growth for both. However, enrollment for traditional in-district students has decreased, whereas out-of-district enrollment is increasing. As a note, we haven't depicted international and other out-of-state enrollment. In this year, examining year-over-year growth, it's further evidence that our strongest growth, which is the blue areas, is around the perimeter of Houston, in areas where population growth is actually, is also strongest. So, based on the information presented, HCC has revised enrollment models to incorporate the improved outlook that is due to increases in enrollment in the last few semesters and retention in this academic year. Based on the recent semesters, conservative projections now, now project an increase of 2% for next year, which is nearly, which is, and remember, the prior, the prior projection was less than 1%, with optimistic targets showing roughly that and a recovery. We look forward to continuing to update the Board of Trustees in committee meetings and board reports in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Doctor Burridge. Trustees, please note that the enrollment slides were sent via the WAB this morning, so you should have those to review as well. Now, we will hear from our United Student Council President, Igor Lucci. President Lucci.
Good evening, Madam Chair, trustees, Chancellor Ford Fisher, respected staff, and faculty. My name is Igor Lucci, and I serve as President of United Student Council here at HCC. I'm excited to meet all of you here for our first-ever meeting this following year, and to share and to highlight the work that my fellow officers and I have accomplished this year, we have planned to accomplish for the rest of the year. Today, I'm going to be speaking about the following items, our tree lighting ceremony, the Space Workforce 2030 at HCC, HCC Welcome Week, and the United Student Council General Assembly. First, my first order of business is I wanted to discuss the tree lighting ceremony held last November at Central Campus. I must say that the students found the entire experience heartwarming. Students from all campuses came together to bring in together the holiday season. We had officers that were made up of USC, as well as SGA's, to come out and volunteer to ensure that the event went without issues. My next order of business is the Space Workforce 2030 at HCC, which was already highlighted. But yes, last Friday, January 19th, at the Central Campus, we hosted the Space Workforce Program. We hosted NASA senior scientist, Dr. Kumilish Lula, Chairman of the Space Federation, Jeffrey D. Grant, and Vice President of the Aerospace Corporation, Heather R. Lechak. USC was able to go up on stage and to talk to the students, engage with them on the work that USC, as well as SGA, are able to do. We also were able to have our own table set up outside and directly engage with students. I always take great pride in engaging our students one-on-one on the work and civil engagement that we do every day. It was, it's officially back-to-school season here at HCC. With that being said, our student leaders have set up a welcome events all throughout campuses, all throughout the district. I just want to specifically highlight the work that our Secretary Stu and our Treasurer Emily were able to do. Stu was able to reach out and connect with students at the Aleve Hayes campus, and Emily was able to engage with students at West Loop and Stafford. My final order of business, I'll be talking about our General Assembly hosted this Friday, January 26th. I'm just looking forward on catching up with my fellow officers all throughout HCC to see what kind of work and strives of progress that they've made, and to see the path that they would like to etch with our following student government. That concludes the United Student Council January Report, Madam Chair, Board of Trustees, and Chancellor Ford Fisher. We thank you for your continued support and inspiring us to become better leaders every day. I yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lucci. Excellent work. Thank you so much for your report. Now, at this time, I would like to invite Faculty Senate President, Dr. Zayzon Grigsby, to the podium to present the Faculty Senate Report. Doctor Grigsby.
Good afternoon and Happy New Year, Madam Chair, Chancellor, trustees, esteemed faculty and staff, and all community guests. Ladies and gentlemen, Happy New Year and welcome back. Trustees Davies and Sheben, on behalf of faculty, I'd like to welcome you to the hallowed halls of Houston Community College. Thank you for your planned dedication to the communities that we serve. So, again, welcome back. As I alluded to in December, a new calendar year in the middle of our academic year allows us to right any ship, and like the rain of this week, to make all things new, an opportunity not to be overlooked. We all experience hardship in our spheres, in our personal spaces, and perhaps in our workspaces. I am no different. But my continued condolences to trustee Vanderbilt Stalwart and Board Chair Linton Gary for your recent losses. And I want to take a brief moment to express my deepest gratitude for the kindness shown to me by many persons in this very room. There are no other words, but thank you. It is important that we continue to recognize each other's kindness. And yet, we all endure. And during these very opportunities for new, we find ways to flourish. This semester's instructional week activity started off with a bang. Leaders Day at our own West Houston Institute highlighted artificial intelligence, or AI, and the future of education, a topic further explored during Instructional Day at the Stafford Center. We were reminded how new technology and tools might be artfully incorporated into our curriculum and not just rebuffed outright. Some of us might remember the hesitation we even had on allowing Internet in our coursework. We can all be sure of change. We look forward to February's continued conversations around rigor and AI and faculty achievement during the annual faculty conference scheduled for February 23rd at WHI as well, a conference put on by and for faculty. And our resident visual arts community has opened our year with quite the flourish. Faculty art exhibits began this month at Southwest College, with works by Professors Rolando Reyna and Melinda Lesinski; at Northeast College, with works by Professor Thomas Dorch; at Northwest College, by Professor Jennifer Waldo; at Southeast College, by Professor Chissette Padilla; and at Central, by Professors Catherine Trimble and Brock Gordon. New works will be added in March by Professor John Force at West Loop Campus. These exhibits are complemented by student art exhibits opening in April. A huge thank you to these visionaries, highlighting our faculty prowess and our institutional facilities. So, we enter this spring semester rested, refreshed, renewed, and ready, recharged and rededicated to support the success of HCC students along their paths, and importantly, ready to welcome anew our chancellor, Dr. Margaret Ford Fisher. Congratulations, Dr. Ford Fisher, and thank you so much for agreeing to this new chapter. Onward, upward. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Doctor Grigsby, for your report, and condolences to you and your family and the loss of your father. Condolences to you. Now, I would like to invite Staff Senate President, Mr. Aaron Henry, to the podium to present the Staff Senate Report, please.
Good afternoon to everybody. We want to express our continued condolences to our trustees who have lost a loved one, and also congratulations to our new trustees. We look forward to working with you. As you know, we're in the first year of the Staff Senate here at Houston Community College. Beginning this academic year, a lot of progress has been made with the formation and foundation of the Staff Senate. Each month, the staff have held monthly General Assembly meetings where goals have been established, committees have been recommended and formed, and a lot of collaboration. With the support of our interim chancellor, the Senate has had representation within the administration. With such collaboration, the welfare of our staff should be realized, but most of all, the ultimate student experience can be realized. Our enrollment assistants, our campus managers, service techs, administrative assistants, communication staff, and many more play critical roles in our students' success. Some highlights from the Senate include the following committees being established: Policies and Procedures, Constitution and Bylaws, Campus Culture, Compensation, and several others. Each month, attendance has grown, and as of December, we had nearly 200 staff members participating in our Staff Senate meetings. I would like to acknowledge the support from Doctor Burridge, our college presidents, and other leaders who have shown support and realized through collaboration the critical roles staff play in this institution. Staff are even intensely interested in the enrollment process and the work that goes with that work, and we are grateful that Doctor Perez and Doctor Villagrand Glover has even responded to our inquiry. We're eager to work with the Vice Chancellor of Student Services and Doctor Fortune and others to ensure that our students have a seamless enrollment process here at the institution. Staff here want Houston Community College to be the best, and we are committed to responding to that call. And then, I have a resolution from the Houston Community College Staff Senate from our January 9th Special Call Senate Meeting. The Houston Community College Staff Senate, Houston Community College Staff Senate Resolution 2324-1, resignation, resolution, I'm sorry, of acknowledgment for the selection of Dr. Margaret Ford Fisher as chancellor. Whereas, the Houston Community College Board of Trustees conducted a comprehensive search in the summer for the interim chancellor position. Whereas, the board identified Dr. Margaret Ford Fisher, an esteemed professional with almost 40 years of dedicated service within the college system, as the best candidate for the position. Whereas, the board has recognized the ongoing efforts and significant contributions made by Dr. Ford Fisher and has confidently chosen her as the sole finalist for this position. Whereas, Dr. Ford Fisher has demonstrated exemplary leadership throughout her career, serving as a faculty member, dean, vice chancellor, and president, and has earned immense respect, particularly among staff, through her dignified and fair approach. particularly among staff, through her dignified and fair approach. Whereas, the Staff Senate acknowledges the importance of the board's decision and expresses gratitude for their commitment to the college's future under the leadership of Dr. Ford Fisher. Whereas, at frontline staff members, leaders, and more, the Staff Senate stands ready to respond to the direction set by the college through our esteemed chancellor. Whereas, recognizing the direct impact of staff on the success of students, the Staff Senate is committed to providing collaboration and support in creating the ultimate student experience. Whereas, the Houston Community College staff congratulates Dr. Margaret Ford Fisher on her historic appointment as the first permanent African-American Female Chancellor of this college system. Be it resolved that the Staff Senate expressed its heartfelt congratulations to Dr. Ford Fisher on this significant achievement and milestone, be it further resolved that the Staff Senate stands ready to be even more engaged through collaboration and collaborative governance, working hand-in-hand with the administration to enhance the overall effectiveness of the college system. Adopted by the Houston Community College Staff Senate on this day, January 9th, in a special meeting convened for the purpose of the passing of this resolution, Erin Henry, President of the Staff Senate, Mr. James Mabel, Secretary of the Staff Senate.
Thank you very much, Mr. Henry. I do indeed appreciate your report and the support of the staff. I am deeply appreciative for all of the great work that you do to serve our students and to support the forward movement of our institution. Thank you so very, very much for that. At this time, I would like to invite Dr. Norma Perez, Senior Vice Chancellor of Instruction and Student Services, to the podium to highlight a student's success story that focuses on credentials of value. Dr. Perez.
Thank you, Chancellor, Madam Chair, Trustees. The student that I wish to recognize is here today. In fact, she's here with her husband. I'm going to ask her to stand. Saha Sosa is from Houston. She earned an Associate of Arts degree in 2014 from HCC, and she decided to continue her education here, later earning an Associate of Science in Engineering/Science in 2017. Earning her first degrees at HCC, she transferred to the University of Texas Tyler Engineering Program offered at our Aleve Campus. She earned a Bachelor of Science in Electrical Engineering in May of 2019. Today, Saha is a Design Electrical Engineer for Aggreko, an electrical power systems company. She has worked on many significant projects for the company, including a key role with the Aggreko team that partnered with the 43rd Riker Cup to provide a complete power solution with 100 generators and battery storage for the prestigious International Golf Championship. Today, she earns $120,000 annually. Saha hopes to become an Electrical Engineering Project Manager. Just the point of interest, she and her husband are expecting twins in February. And now, here's her story, her video.
I chose to go to HCC because it had a lot of opportunities. It worked with my schedule. I was a full-time teacher. I was teaching pre-K in the daycare, so it had to work with my schedule. I fell in love and second in last class. I was like, this is what I want to do. This is what, all what I want to work on, wires, you know, breadboards, just putting logic together. This is all what I want to do. So Electrical Engineering was the way to go. After HCC, I went to UT Tyler, and I signed up for Electrical Engineering Program. During UT Tyler, we participated in bridge building. Also, I was the Vice President for SUI. I was Vice President for IEEE. I was actually one of the co-founders for a machine learning organization as well, which is running huge right now at UT Tyler. And through there, we started expanding, and we started working with elementary schools, high schools, middle schools, and we started doing a bridge competition. And we made the news every semester for how many students joined that competition. I currently work at Aggreko as an Electrical Engineer. At Aggreko, I started as a field engineer for two years. After that, I became a high-voltage certified field engineer, and I worked on various projects. And then after that, I became a Design Electrical Engineer, which what I am right now. But HCC prepared me for that because every instructor I went through, every class I went through, the instructors would tell us how it's like out in the real world. They would tell us what we need to do, what path we take, and I listened to them. I took those paths. My time at HCC made me meet the greatest person I know, my husband. We actually met in class, in Arabic class, at HCC in 2014, and he's the love of my life. And because of him, you know, I'm having a family. I'm successful. So I'm grateful HCC made me find a family and a degree.
Thank you so very, very much, Dr. Perez. And to Mr. and Mrs. Sosa, may we have a photograph with you, please? Congratulations. Please come down to the front. And trustees, would you mind if we join them in this photo, please? Thank you. Congratulations. That's right. That's right. I'll be there. (laughter) So, Madam Chair, Trustees, thank you so very, very much for giving us this opportunity. This now concludes my report. Thank you.
A citizen desiring to appear before the Board of Trustees shall complete the application for hearing 24 hours prior to the meeting and file said application with the Board Services Office. I'm allotted to each citizen, or organization shall be limited to four minutes. The Board may stop any speaker who makes complaints against a specific trustee or employee of comments about the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a specific employee, and may require the speaker to resume his or her comments in closed session as permitted under the Personnel Exception to the Open Meetings Act. The following person has signed up to appear before the Board in closed session, Mr. Joseph Gavin. The Board will now adjourn to a closed or executive session under the Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, 551.072, 551.074, and/or 551.076 of the Open Meetings Act as stated in the notice of this meeting. Should any final action, vote, or decision be required in the opinion of the Board on any matter considered in closed session, such final action, vote, or decision shall be taken up in the open meeting of a subsequent public meeting of the Board upon notice thereof. The meeting is hereby adjourned to executive session at 4:59 PM. For those trustees joining closed session by video conference, please be reminded to disconnect from the open session portion of the meeting and join closed session with the WebEx link provided by closed section, provided for closed session.
(audio cut off). (audio cut off). So we enter this spring semester rested, refreshed, renewed, and ready, recharged and rededicated to support the success of HCC students along their paths, and importantly, ready to welcome anew our Chancellor, Dr. Margaret Ford Fisher. Congratulations, Dr. Ford Fisher, and thank you so much for agreeing to this new chapter. Onward, upward. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Grigsby, for your report, and condolences to you and your family and the loss of your father. Condolences to you. Now, I'd like to invite Staff Senate President, Mr. Aaron Henry, to the podium to present the Staff Senate Report, please.
Good afternoon to everybody. We want to express our continued condolences to our trustees who have lost a loved one, and also congratulations to our new trustees. We look forward to working with you. As you know, we're in the first year of the Staff Senate here at Houston Community College. Beginning this academic year, a lot of progress has been made with the formation and foundation of the Staff Senate. Each month, the staff have held monthly General Assembly meetings where goals have been established, committees have been recommended and formed, and a lot of collaboration. With the support of our interim chancellor, the Senate has had representation within the administration. With such collaboration, the welfare of our staff should be realized, but most of all, the ultimate student experience can be realized. Our enrollment assistants, our campus managers, service techs, administrative assistants, communications staff, and many more play critical roles in our students' success. Some highlights from the Senate include the following committees being established: Policies and Procedures, Constitution and Bylaws, Campus Culture, Compensation, and several others. Each month, attendance has grown, and as of December, we had nearly 200 staff members participating in our Staff Senate meetings. I would like to acknowledge the support from Dr. Burridge, our college presidents, and other leaders who have shown support and realized through collaboration the critical roles staff play in this institution. Staff are even intensely interested in the enrollment process and the work that goes with that work, and we are grateful that Dr. Perez and Dr. Phil Glenn Glover have even responded to our inquiry. We're eager to work with the Vice Chancellor of Student Services and Dr. Fortune and others to ensure that our students have a seamless enrollment process here at the institution. Staff here want Houston Community College to be the best, and we are committed to responding to that call. And then I have a resolution from the Houston Community College Staff Senate from our January 9th Special Call Senate Meeting. The Houston Community College Staff Senate, Houston Community College Staff Senate Resolution 2324-1, Resignation, Resolution, I'm sorry, of acknowledgment for the selection of Dr. Margaret Ford Fisher as Chancellor. Whereas, the Houston Community College Board of Trustees conducted a comprehensive search in the summer for the interim chancellor position. Whereas, the board identified Dr. Margaret Ford Fisher, an esteemed professional with almost 40 years of dedicated service within the college system, as the best candidate for the position. Whereas, the board has recognized the ongoing efforts and significant contributions made by Dr. Ford Fisher and has confidently chosen her as the sole finalist for this position. Whereas, Dr. Ford Fisher has demonstrated exemplary leadership throughout her career, serving as a faculty member, dean, vice chancellor, and president, and has earned immense respect, particularly among staff, through her dignified and fair approach. Whereas, the Staff Senate acknowledges the importance of the board's decision and expresses gratitude for their commitment to the college's future under the leadership of Dr. Ford Fisher. Whereas, at frontline staff members, leaders, and more, the Staff Senate stands ready to respond to the direction set by the college through our esteemed chancellor. Whereas, recognizing the direct impact of staff on the success of students, the Staff Senate is committed to providing collaboration and support in creating the ultimate student experience. Whereas, the Houston Community College staff congratulates Dr. Margaret Ford Fisher on her historic appointment as the first permanent African-American Female Chancellor of this college system. Be it resolved that the Staff Senate expressed its heartfelt congratulations to Dr. Ford Fisher on this significant achievement and milestone, be it further resolved that the Staff Senate stands ready to be even more engaged through collaboration and collaborative governance, working hand-in-hand with the administration to enhance the overall effectiveness of the college system. Adopted by the Houston Community College Staff Senate on this day, January 9th, in a special meeting convened for the purpose of the passing of this resolution, Erin Henry, President of the Staff Senate, Mr. James Mabel, Secretary of the Staff Senate.
Thank you very much, Mr. Henry. I do indeed appreciate your report and the support of the staff. I am deeply appreciative for all of the great work that you do to serve our students and to support the forward movement of our institution. Thank you so very, very much for that. At this time, I would like to invite Dr. Norma Perez, Senior Vice Chancellor of Instruction and Student Services, to the podium to highlight a student's success story that focuses on credentials of value. Dr. Perez.
Thank you, Chancellor, Madam Chair, Trustees. The student that I wish to recognize is here today. In fact, she's here with her husband. I'm going to ask her to stand. Saha? Saha Sosa is from Houston. She earned an Associate of Arts degree in 2014 from HCC, and she decided to continue her education here, later earning an Associate of Science in Engineering/Science in 2017. Earning her first degrees at HCC, she transferred to the University of Texas Tyler Engineering Program offered at our Aleve Campus. She earned a Bachelor of Science in Electrical Engineering in May of 2019. Today, Saha is a Design Electrical Engineer for Aggreko, an electrical power systems company. She has worked on many significant projects for the company, including a key role with the Aggreko team that partnered with the 43rd Riker Cup to provide a complete power solution with 100 generators and battery storage for the prestigious International Golf Championship. Today, she earns $120,000 annually. Saha hopes to become an Electrical Engineering Project Manager. Just the point of interest, she and her husband are expecting twins in February. And now, here's her story, her video.
I chose to go to HCC because it had a lot of opportunities. It worked with my schedule. I was a full-time teacher. I was teaching pre-K in the daycare, so it had to work with my schedule. I fell in love and second in last class. I was like, this is what I want to do. This is what, all what I want to work on, wires, you know, breadboards, just putting logic together. This is all what I want to do. So Electrical Engineering was the way to go. After HCC, I went to UT Tyler, and I signed up for Electrical Engineering Program. During UT Tyler, we participated in bridge building. Also, I was the Vice President for SUI. I was Vice President for IEEE. I was actually one of the co-founders for a machine learning organization as well, which is running huge right now at UT Tyler. And through there, we started expanding, and we started working with elementary schools, high schools, middle schools, and we started doing a bridge competition. And we made the news every semester for how many students joined that competition. I currently work at Aggreko as an Electrical Engineer. At Aggreko, I started as a field engineer for two years. After that, I became a high-voltage certified field engineer, and I worked on various projects. And then after that, I became a Design Electrical Engineer, which what I am right now. But HCC prepared me for that because every instruction I went through, every class I went through, the instructors would tell us how it's like out in the real world. They would tell us what we need to do, what path we take, and I listened to them. I took those paths. My time at HCC made me meet the greatest person I know, my husband. We actually met in class, in Arabic class, at HCC in 2014, and he's the love of my life. And because of him, you know, I'm having a family. I'm successful. So I'm grateful HCC made me find a family and a degree.
Thank you so very, very much, Dr. Perez. And to Mr. and Mrs. Sosa, may we have a photograph with you, please? Congratulations. Please come down to the front. And trustees, would you mind if we join them in this photo, please? Thank you. Congratulations. That's right. That's right. (laughter) So, Madam Chair, Trustees, thank you so very, very much for giving us this opportunity. This now concludes my report. Thank you.
A citizen desiring to appear before the Board of Trustees shall complete the application for hearing 24 hours prior to the meeting and file said application with the Board Services Office. I'm allotted to each citizen or organization shall be limited to four minutes. The Board may stop any speaker who makes complaints against a specific trustee or employee of comments about the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a specific employee, and may require the speaker to resume his or her comments in closed session as permitted under the Personnel Exception to the Open Meetings Act. The following person has signed up to appear before the Board in closed session, Mr. Joseph Gavin. The Board will now adjourn to a closed or executive session under the Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, 551.072, 551.074, and/or 551.076 of the Open Meetings Act as stated
...
The open portion of this meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Houston Community College System is now reconvened at...
6:24 PM.
We appreciate concerns raised during the hearing of citizens portion of the meeting. If the matters you raised are not included in the board agenda, state law specifically, the Texas Open Meetings Act prohibits the board from discussing or taking actions on these issues at this board meeting. The comments provided will be taken into consideration. Thank you. Are there any other items to be pulled from the consent agenda to be set aside for discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the rules and move up items F and G for immediate consideration.
I second.
Listen.
Yeah.
Okay. All righty.
No.
No. Is there a motion to approve item F? Approve the appointment and employment of Houston Community College System, HCC Permanent Chancellor and Authorized Board Chair to negotiate and execute employment contract?
So moved.
Second. It has been moved in second. We will now vote on the item.
Sharon, that's a yes, I mean. Can you hear me?
Yes, I received it.
Sharon, it's a yes. For some reason, I'm... Oh wait, I got it. There it is.
Do you have it now, Dr. Linton Gary?
Yes, I got it.
Thank you. Voting has concluded.
We will now move...
Sharon, I can't get my camera on. Did it conclude? I just got back... I just got service.
Yes, but in order to include your vote, I have... You have to be... Your video has to be on.
It appears there's a lock on your... There's a lock symbol on your camera.
Yeah, I'm in a hospital, so it's not... Reception's really bad, and I'm... I can't get it on. But if it's concluded, I just... Okay, thank you.
The motion passed with a vote of seven in favor, one opposing. And Dr. Tamas has only counted absent for the vote.
We will now move to item G, election of board officers for 2024. Nominate...
I nominate Cynthia Linton Gary for president.
Here. Nomination is now in order for chair of the Board of Trustees.
I nominate Cynthia Linton Gary for chair.
Are there any other nominations?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I nominate La Lou Davis for chair.
Okay.
That's what I told you. I don't know what's in that thing.
Trustee Johnson, you're not muted.
I was making sure. Did you get my nomination?
Yes, I see your nomination.
We need to see your face.
That plus more.
Your camera.
Your camera has to be on. Yes, we... Yes, I can.
Yeah, so I nominated Cynthia, but I thought I was hitting my camera.
Okay.
Am I on here two times? Am I on here two times?
Do you... Are there any other nominations?
You got mine, right?
I recommend that we close the nominations.
It's time for a vote.
How is this going to work? Do you do one at a time, Sharon, or?
Yes, I'll start with Dr. Linton Gary first, and then we'll go to trustee Davis.
Nominations are now...
We're going to cast the vote for the chair first, right?
Yeah, so we will skip there.
Skip there. Voting is in order. Vote for the first nominee, Cynthia Linton Gary.
Oh, okay. One second, let me put the motion in if I could, please. Okay, concluded. Are you ready for the vote?
Yes.
Sharon, my vote is for Cynthia Linton Gary.
Received. And your name?
Charlene Johnson.
Thank you. Dr. Tamas?
Yeah, my vote is for... Are you... Who are you with one candidate right now?
Yes, we're on Dr. Linton Gary.
Cynthia Linton Gary. I'm just... Yes, I'm going to abstain.
Can you turn your camera on for the vote, please? Received. Voting has concluded. The motion passed with a vote of five in favor, one opposing, and three abstaining.
Well, thank you. Okay, we are now ready to... We're now ready to vote for Vice Chair. Call for nominations for Vice Chair.
I nominate La Lou Davis for Vice Chair.
Charlene Johnson.
We will first vote on trustee Davis as Vice Chair for 2024.
It's a no for me.
Oh, okay.
We are now open to voting for trustee Davis as Vice Chair for 24. Dr. Trustee Johnson and trustee Tamas.
That's a no for me.
Not voting for yourself?
This is for trustee Davis.
This is for Davis. This is for Davis. So no.
And is Dr. Tamas still on?
I only heard one.
I only heard one.
There were two.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. I want to...
No, I have not. Can I clear the voting and re... Okay. So we cleared the voting. We are voting now on trustee La Lou Davis as Vice Chair for 2024. Trustee Linton Gary?
Okay.
This is for Vice Chair for trustee Davis as Vice Chair. And trustee Johnson?
Trustee Johnson?
Trustee Johnson, we're revoting for...
For La Lou Davis, that's a no for me.
Okay, trustee Tamas?
I... Yes. I'm trying to get this on. Hold on. Can you see me? Yes. What am I voting for?
This is... This is the cast of vote for trustee La Lou Davis as Vice Chair.
Oh, okay, yes.
The motion passed with a vote of five in favor, three opposing, one abstaining.
Okay. Let me go to the next race. We are now ready to accept nominations for Secretary.
I'll make a motion for trustee Eva Laredo.
And trustee Dave Wilson. Now we close the nominations. Hey, we're now ready to vote.
The vote is for trustee Eva Laredo as a Secretary for 2024. The second nominee for would be trustee Dave Wilson. We're now voting on trustee Eva Laredo as Secretary for 2024.
Sharon, that's yes for me.
Received. Is Dr. Tamas?
Yeah, can you see me?
I can. Yes.
Thank you.
Trustee Johnson? Trustee Johnson, we're voting on the Secretary.
That's a no.
Voting has concluded. The motion fails with a vote of four in favor, four... Three opposing, and two abstaining. We will now vote on trustee Wilson as Secretary as nominated by trustee Linton Gary.
That's a yes for me.
Name, please.
Charlene Johnson.
Received. Dr. Tamas? Dr. Tamas, we're voting on trustee Wilson as Secretary. Okay, she's not... So we will have to count her as absent. Okay. Dr. Tamas?
Hey, what are we voting on? Sorry?
We're voting on trustee Wilson as Secretary for 2024.
I thought we just voted, no?
We voted for trustee Laredo, but the motion failed. The nomination failed with a vote of four, three... Four, two, three.
I'm going to abstain.
Received. Can you turn your camera on, please?
I can't. So you know what? It's the reception. Sorry about that. I'm trying, and I'm hitting it, and it won't.
Okay.
I guess I'm just... I just can't vote.
Yes. So for the purpose of the vote, we... You will be marked absent. The motion passed with a vote of six in favor, one opposing, one abstaining. I'm sorry, recount. Yes, six in favor, one opposing, one abstaining, and Dr. Tamas is absent for the vote.
I'm good.
If you... Can we recess the meeting for a minute?
Yeah, we need to... Yeah.
Madam Chair, if we...
We need a recess.
Yes, if we can recess the meeting. And actually, we can just move the nameplates.
We recess for five minutes.
Six forty.
Open portion of the regular meeting is reconvened at?
6:52 PM.
The regular meeting is adjourned at?
6:52 PM. Due to a lack of a quorum.